Keith will not be here, Cody will not be here, and nowhere is sick.
Would that like to ask for approval of minutes from our previous meeting of the 7:00 point department? I move.
Second.
Any questions? Are you over? Any opposition or? Is that point in the evening where if there's any one of the audience which to address the board, we got to you step in the podium and state your name?
Good evening, my name is John Miller. I'm resident in Hammond. I'm a resident in my children, and my wife, her resident in Hammond. I wanted to bring your attention to an issue that took place a few days before vacation started. And I was, I'm concerned about it, and I wanted to air it out a little bit. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm not used to addressing.
He's running and burning.
But, yeah, so anyway, my son is a sophomore at the Academy. And on Thursday before the vacation started, he was in class. He had stepped out of class to carry out a task that he was instructed to do. He was in the hallway. While he was in the hallway, another student approached him who he was familiar with, he knows. But a student approached him and just unprovoked started attacking him, started throwing. And he swung and struck this student in the face. The student was staggered, stepped back for a second, and then re-engaged my son. And, you know, needless to say, it was completely unexpected, unprovoked. They have no issues with each other. And as I understand it, this particular student had some issues that day. He was, I guess, a condition. You know, he was upset about something. And he, I guess, stated that he was gonna start striking the first person he encountered, which happened to be my son that day. My son tells me that he yelled out to, there were a couple of teachers in the halls. He had yelled for them. Whether or not they heard him, but they did see the conflict taking place, came intervened, and the boys were separated, and they were tipped away. It was all caught on video. The account that my son had given me falls in line, I guess, from speaking to the vice principal or principal coincides with the video that was, that was recorded of them in their encounter. My son doesn't have any issues with this kid now, even now. He understands that, you know, everyone has a bad day, and it's not an issue. But when they were, when they did their accounts of what took place, he was speaking to the vice principal. The vice principal indicated that after reviewing the video and the account that Spencer gave, which was as honest as he could account for, that he probably would have responded in a similar fashion. However, he issued a detention to my son for this coming Friday. As apparently there's a zero tolerance policy for hands-on contact with other students. Needless to say, my son was very upset. He gave him a comment that he felt an injustice had taken place. And we, when we talked about it, I felt as well that, you know, he was a victim of a, of a random attack. Luckily neither boy, neither of the boys were injured. But, you know, nonetheless, it was, it was an encounter that shouldn't have taken place. And then compounding that, he also received a detention, a punishment, which in my opinion, victimizes him again for something that I've taught him. That, you know, if you can avoid the conflict, obviously try to avoid the conflict. If you can, if you can get help, police officer, firefighter, teachers, whoever the people are in the community that you can trust, you should get them to assist you if you can. But if you can't, you know, I haven't taught my son to lay down and take a beating. Certainly try and fend off the attack, and if you have to, respond with a reasonable amount of force. In my opinion, he did that. As a matter of fact, I thought that where the student continued to attack him even after his response, you know, I thought he was extremely restrained, given the circumstances. And needless to say, it's from talking to him, it also sounded like he lunged out in response to that, and then backed off when he could. When I met with the vice principal, and then subsequently with the vice principal, there really was no middle ground. I was disappointed that we couldn't come to an understanding that, you know, in this particular instance, you know, this, I still feel that he responded appropriately. And I wanted to bring this to the group's attention. We were not notified that day or the next day that this event took place. If my son hadn't told me, I wouldn't have known until I received a letter about halfway through the vacation indicating that he had received a detention for the incident, for an incident that took place, but it was, it was, it didn't indicate what had to happen. So, you know, I felt that that wasn't appropriate. I think that if some, an incident takes place like that in the school, the parents absolutely have a right to know as soon as possible, as soon as the incident's been mitigated. And that didn't take place. The vice principal acknowledged that that was probably a mistake on his part in the future. He would, he would do so. But again, you know, my son was a victim in this, and we weren't notified. And, you know, there may have been an injury that may have taken place as well. They were asked if they wanted to see the nurse. Neither one of them wanted to see the nurse. However, they're both minors. A drowning takes over. I'm a 21-year veteran of the Bangor Fire Department, been a paramedic for close to 15 years now. I can speak to how that all works. And in the minutes, hours, or days following incidents like that, you know, you can start to manifest pain or injuries that come about. And in my opinion, it should have been my wife or my son's decision for him to see the school nurse and be evaluated. I feel probably the same way for, for the other year man who was involved in this. I'm not aware if they were notified, but all I can say is that we were not. I think that was a mistake as well. And I'm hoping that, hoping to bring this all to light to the body here, and maybe inspire some discussion on this matter. You know, I think it was, from what I can see, there's kind of a blanket policy as far as the zero tolerance. You know, everyone in this room, all the educators here, the staff are, they're well-educated, common-sensical people that should be able to apply common sense to do incidents like this. Shouldn't have to rely on necessarily a zero tolerance. Other student, and vice versa, so therefore they're both being punished. You know, I don't necessarily agree with that. It was also explained to me that he could have, my son could have received a suspension for this because he struck this other student. And I, I can't speak passionately enough about how much I disagree with that. And although he received a lesser punishment, it's still a punishment for something that he responded to reasonably, in my opinion. And I just want the board to consider that, and hopefully get some discussion going to talk about it, and maybe create some change or.
Thank you for expressing your overview. What I will do is I'll follow up in the conversation with you tomorrow, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, boy.
So we've got this different incident altogether?
If that's a delay, yes.
Oh, so, because it's only.
But I will follow up on this sentence, John. And John, I'll follow up and get back to you.
Thank you.
Would that be in time, when the board's members are between the rest of the board to discuss it as much as an hour, or the policy?
Probably what I'd prefer is let me do some research. I'll bring it back to the board and see what happens, and that the policies will correlate it.
Does it work?
Thank you.
If that's going to be the case, if you're going to do further research on this incident and consider the exact circumstances, would it be appropriate to suggest holding that, that retention and abeyance until further action?
Let me, let me talk to Mr. Megan and Mr. Ray before we find out if that may be an option. Then we'll go back to Tony's question. Once we have the landscape handled and turned back, and then say, the gentleman brought this issue up here, the policies, we know everything, this is how it came together. And what do we need to do, if anything, to modify, strengthen, or?
Are there additional comments? Seeing now, I'm gonna cede my time and move on to the agenda.
Okay, and the resignations. I would like to draw on board's attention to your mailing. I would like to read one presentation this evening, with the rest of the board directors. It states, "I'm a firm believer that opportunities are afforded in life to teach us in hopes we learn from every experience placed in front of us. My opportunity in RSU 22 has done just that by affording me many learning opportunities. I've practiced having a determined mindset with an improvement-focused outlook. After negotiations last year, we've left an impact on the school plan. I have mastered having more patience as I have learned about new aspects of my new job and people associated with it. My disabled skills have given me the best learning opportunity. With concrete need realized, it's time for a new learning opportunity. Ultimately serving my professional needs, the needs of Handel County students, needs of staff, and district, and a thoughtful director of management. Here's my address and I intend on my resignation as high school and Handel County principal effective June 14, 2017. I wish to thank the board of directors for the new opportunity. Sincerely, Lee Manuel." Please, in the audience, I'd ask that you might make a statement, please.
The words that were in the letter that you received were chosen very intentionally and very carefully. So the letter says what I needed to say, and I appreciate your support of my time here, and I look forward to crossing paths with you this weekend.
Thank you. Now, as if I may, though, for the benefit of the public, I'd like to express my opinion. I think, again, as you've heard from me before, but maybe for the public's interest, I continue to have very serious concerns of the leadership turnover in our district. For the benefit of the people's sake, the public, if you're not aware, Mr. Vanessa retired in June 2017. He served us 24 years. So when you lose your assistant superintendent and high school principal and director of food service in six months, that's a massive turnover of office. And I can tell you in my, in my opinion, I witness it every day. The good people out here who come to positions is fueled by our tradition. And I'm gonna give you an example that happened today to me, to personalize it. I had a call from the superintendent schools on capability. Every one of us sitting on this table, you think the capability, if you think up here, okay? And he wanted to get some opinions from me on how they can be successful after two years of securing a superintendent school. That's not good. These positions are critical positions in this district. They're, they're integral to what we do and look to get better every single day. We are a good school system, we're a very good school system. But I'm very concerned with the rapid change of our leadership in our state. And I think we've talked a little bit about the message being sent from our governor and the other things that add to that. But the point is, I wanted to say to the public, it gives me very serious concerns to be recognizing we're losing the upper administration of this district. For the benefit of the audience, if you're interested, I'm retired in three years. So you have your superintendent, your assistant superintendent, and a high school principal gone in a three-year window. And one thing I've been very proud of in this district is what I call institutional memory. And for the benefit of the audience, we've had four members leave us the last five to six months with 20 years' experience, 12 years' experience, eight years' experience. That's very troubling. And I'm not saying that I can't replace that for my message. But what I'm saying is, we need to figure out somehow to recruit and retain the brightest and best in public educational leadership, not just RSU 22. David Wisp, for example, is the other one there. So I'm gonna make that statement, and I think we need to be very diligent in our efforts to obviously secure annuals replacement and annuals replacement in a very short period of time.
Something that we've been talking about as a board for three years now. It's a central part of our planning process, and if it didn't be a part of our conversations, please, just want to extend our thanks to you. And that was an easy decision to reach, I'm sure. Speaking tonight, we've worked together, but we appreciate that. Look forward to working with you over the next six months. Wish you all the best.
Okay, on the other end of the continuum, I have two nominations for your endorsement this evening. Both are for the reform middle school, one of the C basketball coach, Deborah Pulpits. We call it Harris cheering D coach. You can see that he's stifled by the fact that I'm on the contract. God asks you to endorse Pulpits as a C basketball coach, and Harris is our cheering D coach. So we.
Excited? Questions? On the table?
Okay, now we move to the superintendent's report, reading our safety briefing with John.
The RSU 22 belief statement. Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our community to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, John. Next item, I don't wanna read the exhibit to you, but I would like to make a few points and answer any questions. These figures give us the projection for the next 10 years by RSU 22. I think it's difficult to add this in our strategic planning session and noting that according to this, that we're anticipating dropping about 200 students. If you look down to 20, 20, 20, 27, this projection gives us 2,212 children. That was the first one. Then I also gave you a copy by each town. So you can see, for example, I'm looking at Hammond. Right now, Hammond is a price of 1,0266. We're looking, you know, the next 10 years ago, 1,0255. So there's your projection there, and then all that. But the one I really wanted to accentuate was the one that shows us back in 2008. Our enrollment is 2,180 students, and today it's 2,400. That's an increase of 10.04% in eight years. I'm going to talk a little bit later about the regionalization theme that our governor promoted, which by the way, I'm excited about. I'll give the governor credit, and I'm excited about this. But I think this plays also a regionalization concept. So in other words, if a district, if these numbers come to tuition, and we lose 200 children in 10 years, how do we position ourselves to take advantage of the other opportunities around us to mitigate or offset that loss of students, of students, of, 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 of? Tell me.
Back in '06, you had these projections. How accurate was the projection that we would grow 10%? Did they call that, or did they not call that?
They're pretty close, Tony. Yes, they are, yes, they are.
But last year, we had 60 come in that were unexpected.
Yes. And then, of course, remember, we bought, since we moved here, four years ago, we moved here. We are bringing tuition students in. But to answer your question, does that have the compatibility accurate?
So that's just for physical residents? That doesn't include tuition?
Correct. That's a great point.
And we updated the enrollment this year because of doing the application for the draw-up for the budget, but we just received these enrollments. It was a low, one of the things that skewed, though, that the, that the consultant said that it was a low work rate in Hammond in 2015. Very low, significantly low in 2015. Which skewed the numbers a little bit. She was kind of surprised at that, but that's the only thing that was kind of off.
The other thing, following up on Tony's question, I would also add, just to clarify, now with the advent of alternative teachers' services, private schools, that's another option that parents can look at, that they did not have two years ago. So the message here is somewhat simplistic, and that's what our projections are, they're projections. And then, as we look at the regionalization process we talked about in the next two minutes, how do these two delta? But at least that data that we should have is looking forward in the next 10 years. Any other questions, observations, comments? Your projections, we have them updated a year ago, you might have seen them in the news? Yeah, we do for years. And depending on what we do with the, with the raw weather, we may update it again. Okay? Thank you. I do need to, this evening, establish the ad hoc assistant superintendent search base, so if people want that, please, the conference, the end of the meeting. I also included an article giving an overview of our new U.S. Secretary of Education. And you read that, and assuming you can see what the agenda appears to be there, it follows, follows a similar thing to what I did to move to respect two such things as vouchers, driver's school, a ball, a common core, et cetera. But that's the platform that's being outlined, John Herbo. We'll see what happens once that new administration comes into place. So at least that gives us an appetite, or some other vision, if you like, the platform that we're advocating. The next one I did want to talk about, though, and I'm really pleased to be very serious about this, with the governor coming out and providing incentives for regionalization. So let's just back up a little bit, because one thing I'm learning here yet again is, with new board members, I can't take things for granted, that when I say accidents, you don't come out and do what I'm talking about. So in 2008, remember, Governor Baldwin's initial proposal was to rule us the 16 schools. At the time, we're around 208, 16 families, 60 kids. That ended up being about 80. So we went from about 280 to about 80 over the last few years. But what's happened since 2010, right? That reversed itself. That really didn't work, and I think we ought to now recognize that. That was not under the incentive model. What this is saying is, let's provide districts an incentive, and I have the copy of the application we ironically do in the federal part, and we'll probably have that in future. But what I wanted to do is, I wanted to give you five examples where if the regionalization incentive concept would have been operational when we started these things, yet again RSU 22 would have been a pace setter. The first one, I had to do the research, thank you, John, for asking me your question. What's PREP? The Omstot River Educational Partnership is a consortium that we actually started because Ema Line were rejected. We asked, and we had a partnership out in East Cor, and we thought we had a great idea, we thought we were gonna be welcomed, and we said, no, thank you. So we said, fine, we'll start our own. So we did. And now we're about 25 school districts, including Bangor. To bring Bangor into a consortium was a major mountain to accomplish. But the PREP consortium offers consolidated efforts in professional development, training bus drivers. Some of you participated in the annual school board conference that we have, and plenty of so many of attendees, and that has really flourished. Around 2005, after we were in operation for nine years, you could basically Ema Line over, over there, we hired an executive director part-time by the name of Ola Moray, something you may know. And that consortium really has accelerated since 20 years lively ago. There's examples where we can have greater benefits. And now, as I've been talking briefly, we may give some thought to apply to some retroactivity for these. It probably won't happen, but we'll, we'll certainly ask anybody. The other one that you heard about a couple of weeks ago, is the greater regionalization now we have with adult education. Back 10 years ago, we had a very scant adult ed program for SAB 22 at the time. And we're basically having, I'm gonna make the number up, a 2000 grade, like 300 people in the course of a year taking classes. Now we're up to 2,000 people, people who expanded to Bradley, DZ, Old Town, and so on. Speaking of DZ, we're in our fourth year, and we're gonna discuss a little bit later tonight. If we continue the partnership with DZ, we are putting $45,000 into the treasury of RSU 22. $45,000 a year. We brought Frank Fordy to be a member of our family. There's the regionalization concept. And the one that I'm very proud of, that we've working on, is our virtual capacity here in the Handel Academy. If Scott Cuddy were a student in Handel Academy, Scott could be taking online classes. And we're gonna make the number up, and we can currently on the roster. We pay a $200 fee for Scott to take that class to virtual high school in 10 years. But what we're funding is the Omstot Valley High School up in Hamlet. The ones that are paid, their kids will take the virtual class, and they buy it through us. So we charge them 400, we pay the 200, and we make 200. Because if they weren't, they're not a member of the partnership, it'd have to be like $600 or $700 for the class. So it's filtered through us, and that is really expanding very significantly, really. Is that fairly accurate? So those five examples will show you in RSU 22, the question, Rick, what have we done to maybe ostracize some of the things that the governor's talking about? The regionalization of SEER buses? I mean, back in the mid-'90s, we owned our buses in this district. And we negotiated with the union to basically buy out the bus drivers and prioritize transportation. So there's great examples, and many of them, obviously, tied to the teaching and learning, and the better educational opportunities for our children. So the opportunities here, I think, are going to be rich. I'm gonna meet with the administrative council and think about what it looks like. We'll obviously keep the board involved and give us leadership on this, because the timeframe of 27 is very, very tight. It was $3 million. I don't know where the $3 million came from, by the way. But we will see in Friday's release of the governor's budget, maybe that can give us some clarity. But the theme here, though, I guess the bottom line is, the theme, I think, is attractive. It's encouraging people to think outside the box, think in non-traditional ways for the benefit of the community. And you know what I share with us in just a moment? On the Bangor Daily News page today, "The role in hiring teachers is hard to secure, such as lower-level teachers." We have some schools in the greater Bangor area that have had to drop their lower-level curriculum because they cannot secure teachers. So how do we develop a partnership with other communities to do that very thing as an example? One that I mentioned, the Lynn Wells, what is her name? No, just to kind of get her thinking. I know I probably added a little bit, but I'm getting thinking. And that is, what about a regional special education program? I mean, you have to think about these high wonders.
That's like, I think that this is a great opportunity, but they don't have a cap.
Exactly.
For us to look at how we might be able to think outside the box, to get some things that have already bubbled up as high need around our strategic planning discussion we just had. And a good question to ask before January 25th is, if we apply the fiscal, does that prohibit us from being a partner on another application, if somebody else is serving us?
I think, I think him and Dad, you know, what they've done here with the virtual learning opportunity is powerful, is very. So you can see, in summation, there's a lot of, there's a lot of excitement here, because for me, it's exciting because it allows us to think in different ways, in a creative, non-traditional way. And that's the way we need to be thinking about things today.
I was thinking special ed myself when I was reading all of these things. And special ed equipment specifically. Because there are some kinds that you may need a particular lift for one child in one school, and you get to them a few months later, that problem, and then you have this lift. And maybe Winterport could use it, but so could Old Town.
Right.
That was one example they quoted.
Doesn't have it anymore, but they, so just special ed equipment, that kind of thing. Some sort of a consortium that has this, that you can either borrow or rent, or, you know, I thought of that as, as I was reading these things today. I mean, I know that that's happening.
So let me just give you a little bit of the cheat, cheat sheet. The department will give preference to the projects that do one or more of the following. A involves two or more SAUs. B is tied to career and technical education. And we said, I mean, you can see there. C demonstrates significant and sustainable savings. That's the example you just mentioned. And D includes the participation of one or more smaller SAUs. Smaller SAUs around us, D to C. Lunder, Tom Millam, Orington, Dedham, both the separate entities. So those are the examples that they're doing in priority. So we'll report more on this, we'll be going along, as Karen carried out, and then obviously see for your input and direction.
Don't we already have a little bit of regionalization in reference to certain aspects of special education?
We do, we have a Bangor regional program, yes. Given, you know, right now, I think we have approximately 475 children identified in the system outside. The question becomes, how do we, you know, you could expand that personal model? But yes, we did.
Right, and how could we potentially service those students who don't need the special ed, don't follow the special ed, but, you know, those students that we continue to kind of figure out what could we do for, because they don't qualify for certain services? Pretty exciting if you.
Now, here's a, here's a fire-fetched one. Just take this as a fire-fetched one. This may be a reason why we didn't sell the Newburg School years ago. So the question that comes is, is Newburg School, then we own, by the way, if you're not aware. We own the Newburg School. Does that present us an opportunity or an option down the road? Don't know. Right now, we have a public prepay program supplemented with the town office. But does this present itself? Do you not know the answer to that question? But it's a good thought to think about. Even next to Newburg is kind of a bit. We could next, the Newburg is kind of a bit... So it is, it is, it's good. Thank you, Anna.
Okay. Questions for board members?
So this, I know you're gonna get the specifics of this incident, but I was curious about our zero tolerance policy, how that works, and what is classified as violence. Okay? So I was curious, what, what was defined, because I had had a conversation about another incident, and the actual policy was not readily available. Maybe that parent wasn't looking in the right place, or they weren't presented with it, but that was one of their questions, whether that policy could be read. Okay? So we can wrap it in, we have things we talked about earlier. Okay?
So are all of our policies available online?
Yes, they are.
And are the index in there anyway, the flattery system?
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
I think we need a policy to go even further.
But we're also, but following up on Tony's question, and I'll research, but the other thing we don't have online that we might want to do, under regulations.
I think that's gonna be a good idea.
Okay, so for example, I had a school district call us today on our wellness policy. The wellness policy is a static robotic template. The power's in the regulation. So I sent you the regulation, and he called me up, he was so excited, because it was exactly what he was looking for. So Tony, getting back to your question, is maybe what that person should have been led to, or encouraged, and made him do the job at, what's the regulation say? So for example, our harassment policy, that's a policy, but then how do you implement the policy in a progressive way? What do you do first, what do you do second, that type of thing? So the regulation can be where the meat is with respect to defining the substance of the, you have the policy.
Oh, and just having you down the policy, and you say that the time we spend looking at specific words, I mean, very carefully, particularly convincing, that you might look at the range of the term offense, and the lack of the term defense, and consider that appropriately as you look at the specific words.
And I think, as our speaker, John, brought up this evening, is where do we have a policy? I think the parallel, what I was saying is the administrative discretion, for, I think, is a common sense. So is that clear in our policy? Did Mr. Ranger, President, or Assistant, feel he has the lives to do that, or does he only think to go by what he thinks is the script that's in the policy?
Right, and that's where we want to make sure our policy adjusts.
Exactly, yeah.
So we're gonna follow that up. Okay? We educate, run, hide, fight, and that, but that's what we're teaching our kids and our faculty, in the event of...
Right.
So how can we punish a student when they tried to run, but they were pursued, they called for help, help was not already available, and then they defended themselves? I mean, if we're teaching our kids, run, hide, fight, did the two, did the third thing they were taught, but now they're being punished more, I mean, that speaks to Mr. Miller's concern, and that's a concern that I have, which is why the policy and the regulation of the policy needs to draw to the forefront, because, I mean, having not seen the video, which privacy laws I understand, but...
And to follow up, remember, a couple or three meetings ago, we had the virtual audio straight thing, and post those as a result of the incident, we had this unfortunate high school. The committee did not give them the informal title of safety and climate, for, I think that's not a better name, but we met again today, because we're preparing to do a presentation for it, so I think now we can wrap in with that, what we talked about tonight, because that's what we're really talking about, is student safety, the climate, et cetera. So we can do, we can do some work on it. Good questions.
There's many more appropriate for under the committee section, but I was just wondering, you were talking about the turnover in upper administrations, and we've met, and the ad hoc committee first, looking at the assistant superintendent positions, and met, and I'm wondering if maybe the committees that are charged with pursuing the hiring of the next people to fill these different positions are coming open, shouldn't have some time where we sit with the people who currently hold the position, and actually talk to them about that job, how they think it perhaps ought to change, what are some, so that we can sculpt the next position that we're hiring for, instead of just to the blind retirement. So I think we can bring, I think that's a great idea, bring that to the, to the committees and help us.
Similar to what I did per the board directive, you remember, doing exit survey, exit interviews with teachers. I think I came back to it last summer, played more on the panel information, so this is something, that's a good idea. Well, yes, I was initially going to establish the community for the situation that most of us hopefully are aware of. That student is being, is going to be alone in another alternative educational setting, because they're hopefully not going to have the RFPD to be able to communicate. As a side, I'm meeting with the parent Monday morning to reflect on the year from September now, to learn from that. We're gonna discuss the report that we've done with a psychologist and her son, and then hopefully develop a plan on maybe looking at how to re-engage with her child on this call. So...
Parents have, I have a relationship with them, they have a five-person school committee. Matter of fact, let me be very transparent, they have a five school, five persons school committee once a month. They have no subsidies. I go to the DZ community school about once every two weeks, for a full amount. So I'm not out of RSU 22, and not visiting here. The principal may call me or email me maybe once or twice a week. I don't know.
About board meetings, and maybe talk to Max here, calling me about canceling school today. So that's, as long, and talk about budget process, things of that nature, and so on.
But they've become independent throughout the last four years, they have, they had quite a difficult remorse, and like, a separation from RSU 26, but now they're, they're a single unit, and complete autonomy, and you all, probably all, they have no high school, but have high school choice, and they have one school, one city, and you'd like to see that going at the time as well. So that's worked, I think, beautifully. And I think that, again, can be a model, as to how we maybe look to increase that over time, with the caveat of an increase, how do we then make adaptations through our infrastructure, the HR model. So in other words, if we brought, if this district were inclined to think about doing some DZ models, then we would then restructure our RSU 22 model to accommodate that. So that answer applies as well? How about, John?
State law requires all schools in this state, all public schools, to have a chief of competence.
That is correct.
Which is why DZ needed to hire you.
That is correct. That is correct. And ironically, the gentleman with, the principal, I think, has a little interest in it, because one thing that we should get back to your question, if DZ was inclined to have DZ on the superintendent, that's fine, but if they may have a consulting model, they don't have the business structure. So more than likely, they would be very inclined to stay with the business structure, because they have to find elsewhere. If you're not aware, they actually asked their town office, it was back a couple of years ago, but the town office said, no, thank you, because they had to beef up their infrastructure significantly, and higher cost than what we offered. So that's where it is this evening, and we'll bring it back, there's no commitment we're looking for at this time, but we'll bring it back for further discussions when we recover. And let me know if you have any questions, after you've finished. Thank you.
Okay, didn't be in a new business. You know, Wally, I guess, is the head of the, of the ad hoc committee that's been working on this resolution for quite some time now.
Yes, so back October-ish, Brittany put together a resolution, looking at the upper end of the legalizing, the law, the board spoke a lot about maybe changing that, not looking at making, taking a political statement, so it worked with the ad hoc substance abuse committee, looking at how can we adjust this and focus it more on overall wellness for our students, looking at kind of the whole person than just making a statement that that's what we stand for. We brought it to that committee a couple of times, taken some feedback, and made lots, Brittany's made lots of different adjustments to it, and so probably bring it back to the board, sort of kind of look at it and see if we're ready to endorse this yet, or if there are any recommendations.
Thank you for your work on this, and committee's working different things, you could hear work on this. Do you have anything else, Brittany, to add?
No, we, Wally was able to find examples from across the country that we use for this that really encompass what we're trying to accomplish, so I'm pretty, pretty happy with it.
In this regard, I'm curious, does anyone know whether the county of Hamilton is considering being sort of moratorium on retail establishment itself, and I'm not very interested. Well, I have to know that in Colorado, if they, if they somewhat touch the subject, definitely a number of towns and cities, in fact, outlaw the retail sale, even though the state allows it, a number of towns and cities do not.
I asked then of the motion to approve the resolution as written, and I'd go with the willingness of our students publicly.
Okay. Any additional questions?
I said one question. The third and the rest, last resolution, says resolve that the regional school unit or two board directors initiate slash support a legislation to increase, and then all the thing. And what was the thinking behind including the word initiatives? Are we intending to write legislation? Or are we just looking to support legislation?
I think it's more supporting it and starting those conversations.
What possibly meaning with a representative mandate to write? I mean, that's how I... Agreed.
Okay, I was just curious about...
Making those partnerships and, yeah.
Initiating the conversation, rather than supporting the legislation.
I think that goes back to our ongoing conversations about trying to connect the legislation, legislature anyway.
Thank you.
Any additional question? If one, all in favor? Any opposed? Any questions?
Very good work, I say. Thanks again, the committee. Okay, meeting dates. Okay, negotiations, please, we all know, tomorrow, we need a clear part of the pay session, please, and, we need a ad hoc committee for the assistant superintendent. We want to do that today, or right now, the board said, no, they do, that's easier.
Rick, can you remind us, are we going to come in at our own turn and review all the applicants before we meet?
No.
After?
Yes. Because what I'll, I'll draw up some, what a template, a guide, or some sense of standard is that we're looking at, on the example this one. So I'd like to set a meeting, that we can meet at, uh...
Sure. Next, next week?
Next week? Monday or Tuesday? Actually, it might be a couple of weeks. Monday, Monday day. Monday, okay? Okay.
I'm fairly skeptical, so I'll throw it out to the other folks.
I think I'm very close. I'm looking at the ninth going, there's something I haven't written down, my calendar, I know, but right now, I mean, anything to third, like three-thirty on.
Okay. So four o'clock then?
Yeah.
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
All right, let's do, let's do four o'clock.
Four o'clock, ad hoc superintendent, the second draw conference. How many applicants so far? One on the...
Wow, that's great.
Yes. We're working harder.
Oh, no.
Pardon me?
No, I'm just, I can't wait.
Four o'clock on the night. Emo, did you need to add anything?
Yes, one item agenda for the budget committee, which would be Karen, Rob, and Keith. One item agenda is to elect a budget committee chair. The ninth, if you're meeting at the ninth at four o'clock, Rob, can you meet on the night? Karen, you're gonna be there anyway, right?
Mm-hmm. You're gonna be quarter of four?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you get there that early, Rob?
Quarter of four?
Rather than trying to do it after this stuff?
I know, I, my brain's clear up your five, so we're gonna...
We can shoot for five, I guess, and we'll be done in a minute.
Okay, so three forty-five budget committee, Monday, and four o'clock, ad hoc superintendent. And education, we're all set there, finance, we're all set, rules, all set. Okay? Almost all good, boys.
Just informationally, anyone who's interested in the pivot committee, and the pivot staff, and the extended library hours, could come to the meeting tomorrow, which is right in here at two fifty. Thank you, Jeff.
Could I add one more thing, it's something that I, I'm gonna talk whatever that I forgot about. We had a, we've got a couple of discussions now about things that are gonna be occurring in the legislature, and I know at the last meeting, which I was not at, there was discussion around, it's time to meet with legislators, and having, in our district, the senate president, and also just outside of our district, Tori Cornfield, the chair of the education committee, the house chair of the education committee, we have the opportunity to speak to people who are gonna be making important decisions around this, and we need to really use that, and get a good sense of what we want to tell them, bring them in, and let them, let them know in advance what we want to talk about, and really have a good conversation with them about how we hope to be able to, you know, use some of these, these things that are coming down the road, and maybe try to shape the legislation as well.
I think that last year, you might care much to do, do that again, whether we bring them here, or...
Oh, he just, for us. You can be very...
I'll contact them, follow up with them. Just a reminder, our eighteenth meeting is our second session of our under the two weeks. But I'll follow up on getting an invitation after I might just send yours.
Right, just looking through, and nowhere in our policy does it say we have a zero tolerance for violence. In fact, reading the policy, it doesn't even mention anything other than a weapon. It doesn't represent a physical obligation, and then there's another policy under due process that says the students will be afforded the opportunity prior to administration discipline in our school district, due process. And so to follow up on the honest point, to have that suspension for that Friday, what it was called, Friday detention, now we'll often still have an opportunity to discuss it.
What's the color of your policy from you?
The due process?
The due process, to be coding up a writing order.
JIA, thank you.
It was adopted nineteen seventy-seven.
Thank you.
There's also the right, the ICCK, the late study, but it's talked about alternative discipline, other than suspension.
Okay, I'm gonna do those one at a time.
Do individual schools have their own policy, no regrets, or is it all district level policy?
Now, that, the school may have a procedure or protocol that supports that policy, that comes under that policy, but the policy is applicable to this one.
All right, the other thing you want to, I'll just handle.
Handle, and regulate. I'll follow up on this one. Thank you, thank you, Chris.
This may be more of a policy question, but I noticed in the school, in my, each school has, there's a series of new policies that are really just directly pulled from RSU 22, and then really captured in their own book, they're not changed, they're not edited, they're not more strict, they're basically just duplication of RSU 22 in a volume that's called a school, and...
But I don't want to misspeak, so that's where we'll have the principal kind of present, because I know, I'm looking at Reagan, our high school, we have, the name was unchanged, and the schools and colleges also has a template for us to use as a sample. Okay?
Okay, with that, I'd like to...
What's your turn?
Unquote.